So let's uh, let's start the meeting. For everyone watching, this meeting is being recorded. This is the Monday, October 21st, Dartmouth Planning Board Meeting. It is 7:01 PM. I'll start with a roll call vote. Kevin Estes.
Here.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Here.
Heliar Rosa.
Here.
Margaret Sweet is, is not present. And Kevin Mello, present. Our first item is a continued public hearing on the application for a special permit for 413 State Road. Ross, I know you sent an email. Any update?
There has not been any update on that. So I know Peter, we, we, Peter and I spoke on the phone this afternoon, so he should be here.
I do see Peter.
Okay.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Peter Cruz from Cab Engineering for the record. The, the special permit, I'd like to sort of present both the special permit and the site plan tonight. Uh, because they sort of go hand in hand. Uh, the new layout that we've laid out for the uh, for the site sort of addresses the parking requirements uh, that we uh, we sort of uh, spoke about during the uh, the September hearing. Uh, where the neighbors came out and the board had some concerns about trying to accommodate the three additional spots onsite. So the, the new, the new site plan that I have tonight to present uh, actually addresses that and also is big uh, is contingency uh, on uh, the board uh, allowing the, the required, the, the uh, required waivers to allow the three parking spots to be built uh, onsite. So I was hoping to see if I could combine both uh, the presentation for the site plan and the special permit all in one uh, and see, and see how the board um, uh, reaction to the new layout and, and hear what the neighbors have to say with the new layout that does accommodate all 13 parking spots onsite now.
So if we get all 13 parking onsite, there's no need for a special permit, is that correct?
Correct. Yes, correct. And, and but it's based on the board um, approving the three waivers that are needed to, to comply with the three parking spots. And their dimensional setbacks uh, uh, that were being asked prior to uh, these three additional parking spots coming into play.
Okay. Um, John Hanson, we're, we're all set, right? We can let him present and then uh, decide which way to go, or is this not the correct forum? John, are you there?
Not letting him unmute.
There we go.
There we go.
Uh, yeah, that would be fine if the board does decide to go forward with the special permits because Margaret's not here, it would have to be unanimous vote, just so the applicant is aware.
Yep, I'm aware of that.
Okay.
And if the board is uh, so inclined then to grant the waivers, then essentially the applicant can just uh, request the special permit be withdrawn without prejudice and the board can vote to allow that withdrawal. And then vote on the waivers again if you are so inclined.
All right, very good. Thank you. All right, Peter, uh, go right ahead, present.
Thank you so much. I'm sending a request to share my screen. Can everyone see my screen?
No, not yet.
There we go. All right. All right. Great. Okay, so uh, what's in front of you is the, the new site plan uh, that we've developed uh, based on the September hearing. We uh, we did have originally the three additional parking spots in this area. Um, went back, talked to the applicant. We did make it work here, but the applicant was more concerned about public safety uh, in regards to doing a three-point turn and then sending tenants, uh, customers or even employees out onto Route Six. So we made the decision to take the accessible um, ramp that was here and move it over to the, the side of the building, which actually sets up the parking facility a lot better um, for uh, circulation and also ADA complacency. Um, so what we did here was we uh, we added the three parking spots that are, are needed to be compliant to the wet uh, the East Lee property line. Uh, where we're going to dedicate these to the three employee parking spots. And the reason B is these employees will be the ones more familiar with the actual uh, parcel. They're going to be in and out of here every day. They're going to be here for pretty much the whole shift. Um, so it made, made all sense in the world to sort of put these, put these three parking spots along the East River Property Line and label them uh, employee parking. In doing so, we moved the accessible parking spot that was located along the garages to the Westerly Property Line and had the striping and all that located here. Um, making it all ADA compliant up to the proposed ramp which will swing around the house and the ADA um, entrance to the building will be from the front of the house. Um, the uh, let's see, um, for um, the site entrance, uh, that has not changed. We still have a 20-foot driveway. Uh, we did look into the file lane coming all the way out. Um, out into the uh, the driveway area uh, but I think it becomes really confusing if the striping does come out to the parking. Um, out, out to the drive where someone pulling in uh, can be confused at and uh, pushing them over uh, closer to the exit lane. So we cut the file lane back just in, in front of the building. Uh, knowing that, that does give some ample area here for an equipment to pull up and not be blocked and not have anyone uh, in this area blocking um, any fire apparatus that's needed. And also if there is a fire, they do have Route Six and Summit Ave to, to, to fight uh, whatever fire they're uh, they're responding to or EMS uh, emergency vehicles can pull in or. Um, so um, we went through, uh, we did um, do some uh, additional work with stormwater. Um, we did do some um, some additional grading in the uh, the rain garden. And we also did uh, adjust the infiltration system for the trench drain um, uh, in this area of, of the uh, of the lot. Um, so the, some of the waivers that are needed to make the three parking spots compliant um, uh, are the um, we need the setback from the property line. The, the requirement from a property line and, and uh, street is 10 feet. Uh, we're providing two and a half feet from the E, uh, from the East Lee property line here now. Um, the, the, uh, we're also uh, prior to this, we were asking for the reduction in um, uh, parking stall uh, dimensions. Uh, we're, we uh, are requesting a nine by 20 uh, parking spot. Um, the other waiver was the, the driveway width. Uh, the requirement is 24. We're, we're uh, we're requesting 20. And then the uh, the curb cut, the maximum curb cut on a property is uh, 30 feet. But because we have the existing uh, garages here, uh, we're well over that. Um, and we're roughly at about 54 and a half feet. Um, let's see. This is what the um, drainage for the site looks like. Uh, we're picking, picking up this area for the infiltration. Along the back half of the property and then anything else will run down to this trench drain and into this infiltration system uh, over time. Let's see, the uh, landscaping plan. Uh, we did modify uh, or actually added landscaping to the back of the three employee parking spots. And we also have some additional plantings along here where the mechanical units will be um, located behind the house. Let's see, this is the filtration system. Uh, let's see, what's this? Uh, for erosion control measures, uh, we do, we did, I did coordinate with Paul Duah from DPW. Uh, we do have along the whole perimeter of the uh, the site, some straw waddles that are going to be installed. But also Paul wanted uh, another secondary row in here to catch any so uh, sedimentation that could make it down into the um, the rain garden during construction. So we added that second layer of protection that Paul wanted. And then the lighting plan. As you can see, nothing really spills re- really over the property line. There's a little bit that spills over into uh, Route Six, but a lot of it along the neighbors are within the tolerance of the town. Uh, we do have a, a picture of it shown lit, lit up that Rab did for us. And as you can tell, there's plenty of illumination uh, here, and these are uh, controllable, so we can dim them down. Uh, once they're onsite, uh, the contractor can adjust them as needed to make them light, lighter or brighter uh, as needed. And this is the cut sheet for just a traditional floodlight that will be mounted to the, to the house and uh, garage. And this is the existing condition. I think that's my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Anyone from the public with any questions tonight? Either for or against? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Don't see any questions. Okay, so now we'll move to the board. Anyone on the board with any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
Kevin Estes and, and uh, uh, I, are you, are you making any physical changes to the building itself?
Yes, so the building is being completely remodeled interior and exterior. Uh, the first floor is going to be the hassle on with three, three seats.
Just in terms of the footprint?
Nope, nope. The only thing uh, that's changing is really the uh, the deck, the accessible deck.
Okay. Cause I, I noticed on the uh, but on your, your first drawing that, that we have your first plan uh, that shows the requirements table.
Yep.
That uh, the uh, the, the square footage of the building under lot coverage percentage actually changes. I was just curious to see what drives that change.
What changes is this right here, which is the side entrance to the garage is being removed. So that small little area, the, the difference in uh, the building is really the, the removal of the uh, and disposal of the side entrance to the garage.
Okay. Uh, under the lighting plan, um, the, the pictures look nice, but can you speak to the directionality of the lights? Are, are these all going to be faced straight down or are they angled out?
They will actually be pointed down, uh, tilted down. I think this is one of them. Um, so they'll be facing towards the ground to, to light up the area and um, eliminate any spill over into any of the properties.
Okay, and um, and also on Route Six, I just want to make sure that they're uh, the ask about the, on the Route Six side, uh, the directionality of the lighting, please.
Those will be facing down also.
Okay, we, when you say down, you mean straight down?
Uh, let's see, they'll be tilted down. So I believe that they will be down at an angle uh, to light up the porch area. Yes.
Okay, uh, do you list the uh, the angle anywhere?
I do not. I can get those. I don't see.
I just don't want to have, have this be angled out at all to uh, to bleed over into the neighbors or uh, we're certainly not into Route Six.
No, I don't think they, they're, they, they should be directed down, especially the stuff in the front of the uh, the building. Um, I think they modeled the uh, the lighting to be directionally down so that the light spreads evenly um, to light up the uh, the area.
Okay. Uh, and, and you, you spoke to the uh, the, the drainage systems. There's no drainage in there right now. Is that correct?
No, currently everything uh, runs offsite onto Summit Ave and the top end of the lot actually drains towards Route Six. Glad grade.
Uh, no more questions.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just the chair, I have a few questions.
Sure.
Peter, Nick Cyclepatis here. How are you?
How you doing, Nick?
Good. Uh, regarding the curb cut, um, I believe you mentioned you have somewhere in the 50s um, is that correct? Because of the access in front of the garage?
Yeah, so we have a 20, we're proposing a 20-foot drive and the existing garages now are 50, uh, 34 and 34.7 feet.
And you're proposing 20 with the requirement being 24?
Correct.
So um, being transparent, it's a little off color and I understand by matter of right uh, what the property owners have on their side, but I'm just curious um, as a property owner and then my position on the board. Functionally, I see the existing garage as a profound intrusion to the overall line of sight. Both for consumers as well as emergency services and all of the Summit Avenue traffic. What, what is technically the benefit of keeping that structure, although it's their right? Is it the fact that they got three there instead of having two, if you go north and south in line with the others and remove the intrusion?
So the benefit we're keeping the three parking spots here, uh, Nick, is we actually get three parking spots here. Uh, with the removal of the uh, the garages, uh, the three parking spots or two parking spots that could be gained here. Um, the circulation would just be a lot tougher to come in and try to hang, hang left to get into the uh, uh, the closest parking spot. Um, the existing structure does have some value. He want, they're looking to maintain it to allow a, a more um, to, to, to attract the tenants to have off-street parking, but also have a, a covered uh, you know, a spot in a garage where they don't have to deal with uh, snow removal or any of that with car wise. Um, so that, I think that was the reason we looked at taking the garages down with the feasibility of trying to get parking spots as close to the property line to meet, to meet your requirements uh, uh, of 10 feet off the property line. You, you don't get the three parking spots. You're lucky if you get two.
No, un- understood. I, I saw, I saw this picking up too, but then I also saw that the um, the inflow and outflow of traffic would then have estimate of 28 some odd feet here, which would allow almost for two vehicles to transit in and out at the same time. Uh, it was just a question. That's all I wanted to, you know, hear your opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, two for me?
Yes, go ahead, Heliar.
Uh, Mr. Cruz, you're, you're confirming that the three spots in the garages are for the residents, the tenants?
Uh, that's, that's it. Correct. You're correct. You're, Heliar. Cause right now we're, we're dedicating three uh, three employee parking spots to the north. The three garages will be dedicated to, I, I'm sorry. One, each of them will be dedicated um, to each unit. There'll be one for each unit and the third one will actually be um, uh, dedicated um, I believe for the uh, salon. So so we'll have two, uh, two for the units, two, two uh, parking spots for the units and the rest will actually be for uh, anybody showing up to the salon.
Um, can you just also clarify the grade change, the, uh, the three new spaces that you've, you've created? Um, just clarify for me the, the difference in grade, if any, between the space closest to, I guess, the sidewalk? Is there a grade change from one space to the sidewalk?
I think, uh, let's see, that's 122. This is 20. Yeah, there, there's a roughly one and a half to two foot slope difference uh, as you um, get further out to Route Six. It's pretty minimal with a, with this parking spot is now. Um, so I, I, we do, we are putting in another retaining wall as part of this project uh, with curving in front of it. So it's roughly about one and a half feet to two feet as you get closer to to uh, Route Six.
Is the, is the one and a half feet from the parking space or from the retaining, the, the height of the, sorry, the top of the retaining wall?
Uh, top of retaining wall.
Okay.
Which is r- r- roughly the parking spot.
Any safety, any safety concerns um, with the grade change from that space to the sidewalk?
Nope. We have, we have curbing in front of the retaining wall to protect the wall uh, in the nine-foot spaces. So you can easily get in and out of your car easily.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Peter, I have one more question.
Yes, Nick.
The approach from the corner of Route Six and Summit, someone making that right-hand turn, what's the distance from there until they can enter the parking lot?
It's uh, 50, 50.12 feet. Kevin, I think there's someone that wants to talk. Paul, Paula Rosa, he keeps asking to talk. Looks like someone needs to unmute him.
DCTV, who do we have tonight?
Hey, you have uh, Dan?
Hi, Dan.
On mute. I'm not sure if they still want to talk or?
Can you hear me?
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name's, my name's Paula Rose. Um, but I, I own the property on Nine Summit Avenue with my brothers. And I was wondering if there's going to be any type of fencing between us and the parking lot?
So what we're proposing, we are proposing a, a six-foot vinyl privacy fence from, it ties into the corner of the garage all the way back to the end of the property line uh, adjacent to Spocky's auto. So there is a six-foot fence uh, being put in.
I'm, I'm not sure if my brother is unmuted. I know he wanted to speak, Andrew.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, for the, for the record, all of a sudden, we were just able to speak. I was, we could not unmute the whole process, so not too pleased with this, but anyways. I sent a letter to uh, the board and I have one question. Was there environmental testing on the machine shop location to determine any possible soil contamination prior to the sale of 413 State Road to the current owner? From day one, this was listed as a Scandinavian import shop. It was actually two businesses. It was a gift shop and it was a machine shop that used cutting oils. So that is my question, because we don't want to have problems on our land. And then we're wondering, is that the reason why the garage is not being taken down? But most importantly, was there testing done before the sale?
Uh, Andrew, to answer your question, I'm not aware of any testing that was done prior to the sale. And the garages are only being kept because of the uh, the three parking spots like I did, uh, was explained before.
Okay, all right. I answered my question and we're on the record, so I'm all set.
Thank you.
I have, I have a question. Um, it looks like the grade
Who's speaking, please?
Um, Phil Rose, Paula's husband. Um, it looks like the grade is going to pitch from the back parking lot, those seven spots towards uh, looks like there's a three-foot difference from the parking lot to the, to our property down towards us. Is that correct?
So we hold, we, we hold the grade along your, the southerly property line and we grade towards, towards the site to, to build this retention area. Um, this, this rain garden area, which is on their property. Uh, it does grade down from the, the parking, the parking lot. Uh, the water is conveyed through these um, this riprap slope uh, into the, the uh, the rain garden. And once it hits a certain, I believe we have a, an area of six inches before it actually makes it into the detention air, uh, actually, we go to the drainage before it actually goes into the drainage system underneath the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, one last question, Andrew Sylvia. This is really to the planning board. Is there any concern that uh, this garage or was, was the uh, the machine shop was never described in the plans at all?
We, we are going off the most recent use. So in my lifetime, I've been here for 52 years. I don't remember any machine shop being in that area.
I lived right next to that. It was a machine shop that was next to the Scandinavian import shop. It was two garages. I just want to, you just want to know if, if the board is okay with them not, that, that was not brought up in the original plan.
Uh, John, would you go back multiple uses? Or is that more a conservation question?
I was just going to say, I think that might be for the Environmental Affairs Coordinator. More than this board, it could be out of the scope of your uh, decision this evening.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right, Dan, anyone else that you see looking to speak?
Uh, it seems to be it.
Okay, thank you. So board, what, what's your? What would you like?
Um, so a- as I understand it, we're uh, we, we are, we're, we're passing on the uh, the, the three, the, the special permit for the, the parking spots, right? Like, like, I, I guess I, I would like to hear from, again, from uh, from the engineer or the uh, the owner, what, what exactly they're asking for today? Since it changed.
All right, yeah, so um, Peter, we're asking you for a, just a summary of the, the waivers you're asking for.
So the waivers I'm asking for, uh, let me just actually go right to the cover sheet. Um, we're asking for the required setbacks from property line and street. The requirement is 10 feet. We're providing five and a half along the East Lee Property Line and two and a half along Summit Ave. Um, the parking requirements for stall dimension, uh, this, the requirement is 10 by 20. We're asking, but we're asking, we're providing nine by 20. Uh, uh, the two-way driveway, 24 feet wide, we're providing 20. Um, the required uh, driveway and curb cut max, oh, sorry, that's a misspelling. Uh, the requirement is 30. We're, we're providing 54.5 feet due to the existing garages. Uh, we're asking for a waiver for traffic impact statement. And we're also asking for a waiver for um, the screening requirement uh, um, section 4C, the screening requirement. Uh, we're actually providing um, a fencing for the screening uh, due to the limitation of, of a lot. Uh, the 4D, the tree standard, um, which uh, is a requirement to plant a couple of trees along the property line for screening. Uh, 4E um, is also another landscaping along the property line. And then 4F, uh, trees along the state road, which we don't have any. uh, trees along the state road, which we don't have any room to do. Which is another requirement for you guys.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, I, I think just to answer, uh, Kevin's question, if, if that was Kevin who spoke earlier, um. So you basically are taking into consideration that first waiver to determine if, in fact, you even need to issue a special permit, that first waiver of meaning allowing that parking area to be two and a half feet away from Summit Avenue, if you are comfortable with that. Then, like I said earlier, you can entertain a motion to withdraw the special permit without prejudice, and then just vote on the site plan and those other waivers.
Okay.
And, uh, Kevin, if I may, really quick, um, the DPW hasn't had a chance to review these most recent plan sets, I know Peter and I, we spoke about that earlier, but I just wanna make sure that's, that's set on the record.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ross.
Mr. Chair, one comment if I can?
Yes, Helio Rosa.
So, um, I just wanna acknowledge the effort by Mr. Cruz, um, in the revisions that were, were made, um, particularly in, in previous comments that were made by not only the public but by this board, um. The plans that are before us today, I think are a marked improvement in addressing, um, addressing those concerns. Uh, given the limitations of the existing site, uh, and meeting every last letter of the, of the requirements. Um, I think this is a much healthier solution than we started out with. Thank you to Mr. Cruz and the team.
Thank you.
So if DPW has not reviewed this, then this is just for presentation only, is that, am I understanding this correctly?
That is correct, well, yes, so.
So you're, so you're looking for, for a, uh, a, a postponement until, uh, until the next meeting?
That's correct, yeah.
Um, when is their next meeting?
Is there, is there, could, could we get an approval tonight on the conditions of meeting the DPW, uh, uh, requirements, I, I know we addressed all of, uh, Mr. Duat's, uh, concerns. Um, and, uh, his comments, uh, I know he's still in the process of reviewing the new plan and, and the new stormwater report that we've supplied. Um, is there, is there a possibility of getting an approval tonight with the condition that we meet DPI's requirements?
Uh, I, I, I for one would, would like to, to make sure that DPW is, is okay with this before I vote for it.
Okay, thank you, Kev.
But I, I'm, I'm just one, one board member.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yes, please.
I, I'm with Kevin, I'd like to hear from DPW and, um, in all fairness to Peter and team and the property owners, I'm just, I'm really stuck on this curb cut issue when the majority, not the majority, but a significant portion of the curb cut is entering the garage. We have a restraint coming in and out, and now we have a parking spot that's approaching the street by two and a half feet, I, I would much prefer that we wait for DPW as well.
Okay. So would someone like to make a motion?
Um, Ross, when is their, uh, the next meeting?
Uh, the fourth.
I make a, a, a motion to, a- and we're not, uh, we're okay with, there's no deadlines or anything?
No. Nothing to change. Unless, uh, Mr. Duat comes back with something or a comment on the, uh, stormwater report.
We're at least okay till the fourth? Ross?
I agree.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, then, uh, I'll make a motion to postpone this, uh, this application, uh, until, uh, our next meeting of, uh, November fourth.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Oh, thank you, and I'll see you in November.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, do you need me for any other applications tonight?
Um, Ross, I think we're good, right?
That was it, thank you, John.
Okay.
Thank you.
In you, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Take care.
Okay, so, uh, site plan review, uh, administrative item number one. We will continue that also.
Do we need a motion? Doing with the public?
I'd like, uh, so we're leaving the public here and open.
Okay.
Yeah, we continued it, we are now looking for a motion for administrative item number one. Uh, s- the site plan review to be, uh, also extended.
Uh, I, I make a motion to, uh, to postpone that or continue it until, uh, November, uh, fourth.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion made by Kevin Estes, second by Nick Cyclepatis, all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Did we close the public hearing, or we don't need to?
We did not close the public hearing, we continued the public hearing.
Okay.
So, that it stays open.
Got it.
Number two, definitive OSRD, special permit subdivision plan, Golden Farms, four eighty-two Fisher Road. Mr. Giosa.
Good evening, for the record, Steve Giosa, representing the applicant this evening. Um, as the board recalls, we had some, uh, revisions to make, um, after the last meeting, which we have completed, uh, we did file those, um, with the, uh, the town portal and then um, did we receive a, an updated comment from Ross regarding a couple of notes to be added to the plan regarding um, stone walls being either preserved and or rebuilt, uh, on the property. And we've added that note to the plan, um, and then there was a request to have that as a deed restriction on all the properties, especially concerning, not, not regarding that, regarding the um, no disturb zone on this, this site, if I can share my screen, maybe it'll make it a little clearer what I'm referring to here. And so here is the drawing, and just so you recall, this is a seven lot subdivision on the east side of Fisher Road, yes, Fisher Road. And if you recall, we agreed to no disturb zones along the north and the south boundary line of the property. Um, and when doing that, um, we ended up putting, uh, notation on the plan at Ross's recommendation that all of the deeds for the property would have a notation or a deed restriction that those were no disturbed, that there would be no clearing within those zones. They were designated no disturb areas, that we would set one hundred foot, every one hundred feet a sign, identifying it as a no disturb zone. And then we added a note regarding, uh, trees adjacent to the no disturb zone that were specimen trees, very unique trees, or trees that were of a unique size. That if they were adjacent to the no disturb zone, but not quite in it, that those would also be preserved, so we've put those notations on the plan. Um, and then, um, when we look at let's see. I think those were the, the changes there. DPW had a number of changes that they asked for, we went through those. There were really more cosmetic changes to the plan, there were some contouring uh, glitches here in the middle of the existing conditions drawing. Within the development itself, um, I reviewed with Paul Duart. Um, the drainage system, he asked for some clarification on a few details. We have made those, uh, final clarifications, there was an identification of a silt fence line that needed to be clarified. Uh, we needed to move the silt fence line out of the no disturb zone, which we have done. Um, so we think we've addressed all of the issues, um, that had come up. Uh, the stormwater management system, uh, meets all the standards, we exceed the, uh, minimum uh, stormwater detention and volume mitigation requirements of the stormwater regulations that, uh, the town imposes. Uh, we've made one minor modification at Paul's request, that the catch basin in the street. We originally had two catch basins, he suggested to clean up the, the area, we went to a single catch basin with a double grate. That would allow all the water to get into the stormwater water quality unit and then into the detention basin, um, and eliminate a little extra granite curbing and another structure on this side of the road. Uh, so we have, in fact, taken his recommendation there. We also, uh, weren't originally gonna take credit for sediment sump at the bottom of the detention pond, at Paul's recommendation. We did redo the calculations, taking credit for that and demonstrating that we're able to retain and recharge excess runoff volume on the site. While still getting proper mitigation on the peak flows leaving the site, so we think Paul's recommendation was good in that regard, it cleans up a little bit of the site. Um, eliminates the need for individual recharge units on each lot, where that recharge is going to occur within the basin itself. Um, so that does simplify the overall construction process. Other than that, there were a couple of minor detailed notes that needed to, that Paul had asked us to change, which we have done. Uh, we've created, um, some clarification on the um, water quality swell, this is a just added some dimensions that he suggested, uh, along the base of the water quality swell, identifying it as a dry water quality swell, and with a, um, a sandblown mix for the base to promote some filtering and sediment control. Uh, we do have our open space boundary sign. Uh, and a little bit of clarification on the stormwater treatment unit that is proposed, this is a a water quality unit that all the runoff from the roadway will pass through, get sediment and oil and grease separation within the roadway system, so that's again, in keeping with the requirements. DPW required, which is really not a subdivision requirement, but we think it maybe it does add something to the plan, is a, what they call a materials plan. We've cleaned up that drawing, so it seems a little easier to read, where we're calling out the uh, turning radius on the cul-de-sac, the length of the curbing involved. Uh, granite curbing on the inside, the length of curbing there, materials within the pond, so again, just, again, clarifications in those for those system elements for the project, and then, um. I think I already went by them, um. On the construction details, uh, we did clean up a little bit with placing the mailbox against the right of way line, that frees up more sidewalk area uh, between the edge of pavement and the actual mailbox pedestal back here, so we're not gonna interfere with snowplows. Yet we will have a concrete walkway leading from the street to the pedestal and all of the mail uh, for all seven lots will be in a single, uh, sh- location here, uh, on the property. So we think again, that, um, that works really well. Uh, we clarified a detail here, that because this is a double catch basin, that the town requires a five foot diameter on the structure, as opposed to the normal four foot diameter, so we have added that, uh, to the detail sheet. And that's pretty much it, um, so, the last meeting, there were a handful of minor comments, we did address those. I did speak to Paul on Friday, he submitted final comments at noon time or midday Friday, these plans, which have already been uploaded to the portal, reflect those comments and, uh, we believe are complete. Uh, addressing any of the outstanding, uh, issues that had been raised. Uh, particularly regarding the no activity zone, which again is noted on the construction drawing. And we do have, uh, these lines indicating no work within that area. Um, the last meeting, we did talk about showing wells and septic systems on adjacent properties, so that we're able to demonstrate, we can put septic and wells on our own property and not interfere with the required uh, setback requirements, so we think with that, we hopefully are in a position to, um, get a certificate of action from the board, you did close technically the public hearing at the last meeting. Uh, subject to these last few cleanup items. Uh, so we hope we're at a point where we can get a, a vote on this in terms of certificate of action. And be able to move into the, uh, appeal period phase for the project.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Uh, procedural question, uh, Mr. Chair, um, it, it, with an OSRD, do, are we, uh, is a, is a HOA agreement required?
Yes, it is.
And is, is that the agreement itself, is that uh, a required part of the, the submission and the application, or, or, or is, is that? Reviewed by somebody?
Never, we have never reviewed.
I, I'm asking more for my opinion or, or my, my knowledge, not, not necessarily to, to say it should be here.
Yeah, I think what we've, if I may, I think what we've done in the past is if the board is comfortable with the overall design, then we would submit a, um, the open space covenant, cuz you have to approve that. That would happen when you're getting to the point of endorsing the plans, um, but that's kinda, it's basically a boilerplate document that says the open space can only be used for passive recreation. Can't build structures, it basically mirrors or mimics the zoning bylaw, um. And, um, that's something that you would have to sign off on at the time of endorsement of the plan, just like you would the covenant, that would restrict, you, we'd have to have a performance covenant, which also gets endorsed at the same time the plan, and then all three documents get recorded, the registry at the same time. Uh, we do make mention of those required documents on the recordable plans. So we can't go to record without those documents being approved by the board at I, I would think a subsequent meeting, probably the next meeting, if in fact you're comfortable with the plans as they exist, but this is subject to a performance covenant, um. Homeowners Association Trust, which basically creates the mechanism to maintain the open space. Um, and obviously a special permit regarding, uh, this plan, because it is an OSRD, um, project.
Got it.
Okay, any other questions?
And there's also a reference, I'm sorry, there's also a reference to the open space covenant right here that has to be, once that date is set by you endorsing it, we insert that on the reportable Mylar.
Mr. Chair, question for me, uh, Steve, what, what's the date of the latest plans that you're referencing here?
These were revised on Friday, October eighteenth, they have been uploaded to the portal, um. And these are the, the current plans, which reflect the notes that Ross had suggested we add to the plan, and, um, and Paul Duat's and I's conversation on Friday.
So maybe this is a question for Ross, Ross, these plans are not in my packet.
Correct, we, uh, Steve, I, I, I believe these are the plans that you referenced in your email to me this afternoon?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so yeah, Helio, I haven't had, uh, didn't have a chance to fully review them, um. So I, I don't know what other departments have had a chance to review them or not, um, but I didn't have a chance to review them and send out my comments to you guys.
And I did forget to mention, there was a stone wall note that, uh, Ross had suggested, and you can see that is on the plan here, note number ten. And essentially, in, that's mirroring the OSID regulations three seventy-five eleven point seven L, which talks about preserving and or reconstructing stone walls disturbed as part of an OSID project.
Alright, so any other questions from the board? So as Steve mentioned, they will be coming back before us, uh, for final, we are voting on For final, we are voting on the the concept of the plan. Um, and given approval for that, at which time the public will have, um. Time to challenge, I guess, if lack a better word.
It is a twenty day appeal period which start when you file with the town clerk, correct?
Correct. So. Can I have a motion from the board, please?
Motion. Sorry, go ahead.
Well, go ahead, Nick.
I I feel that Steve has answered, uh, all of our questions and, um, I'm prepared to make a motion to move forward as proposed by Steve.
Okay, I have a motion by Nick Cycle Patus.
Second.
Was that Helio?
Yes.
Uh, second by Helio Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Very good.
Very good.
After the appeal period.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night now.
All right.
That appeal period starts when, Kevin?
Once we get this to the town clerk's office, which is tomorrow, correct, Ross? Now that we've voted on it.
I would imagine, I don't know if he has, you know, if, uh, other departments see it and require any changes. I don't know if that would dig. Like restart that timer or if that timer starts tomorrow, like I will check and let you all know.
Just curious.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Site plan number three administrative item, site plan review, sixty-eight Old Fall River Road. Continued from ten seven.
Uh, similar to last meeting, the engineer called me and said that they weren't going to be ready and requested continuance to the next meeting.
Okay. The next meeting or just the future meeting, it I I noticed your email, so.
Yeah, I just, I I know that the fourth is filling up. Um, so I was just trying to keep that in mind, given that I had a hunch that these, you know, may get continued tonight. Just something to keep in mind is that, uh, that agenda fills up already.
So if we, um, ask that the motions be made instead of a date certain. To a fut- a future meeting. So I can keep that in mind when they're making motions and seconds.
Yeah.
Instead of saying to our next meeting or to our November fourth meeting, please just say to a future meeting. So that if they're not ready for that meeting, it can be the meeting after, if we're too booked. It can be the meeting after. It's not certain. When you say that date, we must hear some take action on that date. So with that being said, uh, can I have a motion, please?
Motion to continue site plan review for sixty-eight Old Fall River Road to a future meeting.
Thank you. I have a motion by Helio Rosa, a second by.
Second.
Nick Cycle Patus, all in favor, Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Uh, approval not required. Two two fifty-four C, Patombska Road.
Okay. This A and R plan is for the reconfiguration of map ten, lot nine and map ten lot nine two. By creating and swapping two non-buildable parcels, A and B. Uh, essentially, A is going to be land from map ten lot nine. And is going to be conveyed to map ten lot nine dash two and vice versa for parcel B. And I believe, um. This, both of them are labeled non-buildable on the plan. They don't impact their frontage. They're both within the single residence B zoning district, um, which would thus satisfy. One point one zero three of the subdivision regulations that require that. If the creation of parcels are without the required frontage, they're at least labeled non-buildable, which they are here. And I think Steve is also present for this one, if he wants to speak further.
Yes, good evening. I didn't, I didn't really mean to disappear on you guys that quickly. My wife reminded me I had a second hearing tonight, um, so you got a herd of blame for me to be here. Uh, if I can just share my screen just really briefly again, um. And, um, this is a fairly large piece of property off of Tom's Road, Tom's Road off to the east of the site. Number of years ago, we did a form A plan that created three parcels of land that separated three existing. Houses that predate subdivision control into a lot here, um, lot one, a lot three. Lot two located on this side of the the point and then lot one on that original subdivision. On the south, um, west side of the point. And there are three existing primary dwellings and now they're all separated onto separate lots. So. That plan was endorsed by the planning board a number of years ago. Uh, it's on record at the registry of deeds and. Subsequent to that, there was a determination that the septic system that serves the lot on the house on lot two. Actually extends over onto what was created as lot one. So to eliminate that encroachment of the septic system, the decision was made to create a little parcel of land, a little rectangle. Uh, in this area, deed it from what was lot one over to lot two. And in exchange for that, so the lots don't really change in lot size, took a sliver of land from this side here. And take that sliver, um, from lot two and add it. As a non-buildable parcel onto lot one. So it's really an intent to clean up that, uh, encroachment. Of the septic system so that the owners of lot two can control. The position of their existing septic system, which was built back in the, uh, nineteen eighties, uh, and still working fine and serves that house. So. Uh, no change in number of lots and really no change in square footage of either lot. Within a couple of square feet, the two parcels match. Um, they're both, you know, fairly large over eight acres in size. Uh, so we think again, it's just a fairly simple land swap. Um, and as Ross indicated, they I I labeled as non-buildable parcels on the plan.
Very good. Thank you. So, uh. Any questions from the board? Okay, any motions from the board?
Make a motion to approve as proposed.
Motion made by Nick Cycle Patus.
Second.
Second by, uh, Helio Rosa, all in favor, Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes.
Very good. Now I'm really gonna leave.
Okay.
All right, good night.
Thank you. Number five, tree species update, one thousand Reed Road.
Okay, so essentially I I was contacted, um. By the engineer for this property that certain trees that were specified on the landscaping plan that was approved is. Are being put on the invasive species list. And they presented some recommendations for substitutes that I included in your packet. Um, given the current situation, we decided that it would be best to have this brought before the board.
So basically, um, they did ask, you know, should they come to the board? Could Ross approve it? Could I approve it? And when in doubt, let's just put it to the board. So, um. Yeah, basically, we're talking apples for apples. I don't know the difference from an silver maple to a. Regular maple, so, um. What's the board? Any motion from the board?
Yes, question, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Ross, any concerns?
No, no, I checked this with the tree warden and he didn't seem to have any issues with this, uh, proposed substitutes.
Motion to accept the substitute.
Okay, I have a motion by Helio Rosa. Do I have a second?
Second.
I think, uh, Kevin got that one. By Kevin Estes. All in favor. Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Very good. Minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty-four.
Motion to accept and file.
Motion made by Nick Cycle Patus.
Second.
Second by Kevin Estes, all in favor, Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Correspondent, city of Fall River, town of Free Town, town of West Fork. Uh, we would. Kevin Estes, acknowledge and file, second, please.
Yes.
Second by Nick Cycle Patus, all in favor, Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Number eight. VR information, old business, new business. Uh, any questions on zoning board of appeal, legal decisions, legal ads? Okay, subcommittee reports. Anyone have any meetings? I think Margaret had one, but, uh, she can fill us in on the next time. Uh, moving on to planners report, Ross.
Um, I think the only thing I have for you all today is just the standard approval of the planning consultant hours. Other than that, it's been the, you know, the same handful of applications that are that are coming through. Um. We've had a a good amount of site plan reviews come in the past week. Um, hoping to spread those out, so the next couple of meetings aren't too inundated, but. Um, I'll keep you all updated as they as they come in.
Okay, so we do need a vote, please, on, um. On the hours for the consultant.
I move to, uh, accept the hours as as, uh, presented.
Okay, we have a motion by Kevin Estes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nick Cycle Patus, all in favor, Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Helio Rosa.
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, yes. All right, chairman's report, um. Basically, just that, uh, I'm I'm hoping everybody can make it tomorrow at, uh, six o'clock in person at town hall. Um. Ross, I I, we're all set with the way the meeting was posted, is that correct?
Yes, yes, I I clarified it with the select board's office before I approved it to, before I, uh, uploaded it to make sure that it matched theirs and it did.
Okay, so this board will meet. At six o'clock, we will open a meeting of the planning board, is that correct? Then we will recess and go to the joint meeting with the select board.
I will, I will double check that and send an email to all of you just to make sure, better safe than sorry.
Yes, so I believe that's what we'll do, and then we will, once we're done. We will adjourn. So this whole process tomorrow will be public. Yes, okay, all right. Um, if you have any questions in advance, um, please reach out to Ross or, um. If we need to, we'll have Chris Vitale, but, um. You've received the directions on how to ask questions, what questions to ask, how to be consistent with your questions. Um, so stick with that and we'll be good. Um, that's all I have for right now.
Just for the record, there weren't too many people at town hall tonight. I was the guy from the planning board that went to town hall. By accident.
I was gonna say, those floors didn't look nice enough to be yours when you sent me a picture, so. I knew right away you you weren't at your house.
Funny.
So, okay.
All right, you want the magic motion?
Please.
Make the motion to adjourn. Oh, sorry, Helio, sorry. Mister Chair, I retract my motion.
Okay.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a Helio Rosa. Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Nick Cycle Patus, all in favor, Helio Rosa.
Yes.
Nick Cycle Patus.
Yes.
Kevin Estes.
Yes.
Kevin Mello, yes. Good night, everyone. See you tomorrow.
Bye, guys. Good night.
See you tomorrow.